I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is the October 5 meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, general law, Section 20, remote meeting via Google Meet technology. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved. Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes from September 21, 2020?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the minutes from the 21st of September? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Under comments, questions, and requests, do we have anything? I would like to read a letter that was submitted to the item. Unless there are any objections, there being none. This was in the opinion section of September 25. We did it. We have successfully completed our first week back with our students since March. Under those masks, we saw smiling faces. Our halls came to life again. Our classrooms, although properly socially distanced, were repopulated with students ready and eager to learn. As educators, we have been anticipating this event all summer, at times we were unsure this day would ever come to fruition. None of this, not one second, would have been possible without a collaborative, cooperative effort from the entire town of Clinton. Thank you to the many stakeholders. We, the educators in the Clinton Public Schools, feel extremely blessed to have worked and collaborated with an administrative team as dedicated as the one we have. Thank you to the tireless effort of our superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Principals, Assistant Principals, Technology Team, Secretaries, Food Service Staff, and Custodial Staff, who spent countless hours this summer to ensure our students had the opportunity to come back to school and learn in person. For their time, commitment, and dedication to this community and its children, we are eternally grateful. We, the teachers, are blessed to work in a community that rallies together in times of crisis, and together, we build the future, one child at a time. Robin Quist, President, Clinton Teachers Association. Please extend our thanks to, again, to all those involved in allowing us to get our schools open and get our students back to their work.
Well, and we had one more exciting moment today. We had our very first eighth grade gold team band rehearsal outside.
Oh, terrific.
And they were like 10 feet apart, and then kind of our specialized masks aren't in yet, but they had their masks on their instruments, and they kind of did just best work with us as they could. But it was so good for them to create real live music today.
Nice. Well, thank you again for all of your efforts, your continued efforts.
You're welcome.
Dr. Meyer.
So I would just piggybacking off that letter that the CTA wrote, that Robin wrote, that was very nice, and I did share that with Commissioner Riley, and I shared it with Tom Scott, the Executive Director of the MASSS, and just to show them that, you know, we can make it happen if we work together and follow the guidance, and they were very impressed. So, thank you. So Superintendent's report starts with an unfortunate retirement letter. Received a letter from Mike McEckern, reads effective December 1, 2020. I will be retiring from my position as Director of Technology for the Clinton Public Schools. This decision was necessitated by recent health concerns. I am extremely grateful for the opportunities I've been given and the experience I've had working in Clinton during the last four years. I'll miss the students, faculty, and staff, and will be interacting with daily. I'd like to extend a special thank you to the technology team. They've been wonderful colleagues and friends. I only wish the best for students and staff at Clinton Public Schools during the 2021 school year and beyond. So Mike will be missed. He is here until December. I actually, working primarily from home, because that's what he's been cleared to do. Actually, I was in the office yesterday, and I saw him yesterday. He was coming in to grab some Chromebooks to bring back to his house so we could set them up and then bring them back. So he's still very much a part of helping the team, but he is working from his house due to medical reasons, and he's going to stay on board till December. So our goal, we have the position posted. The posting closes the Tuesday after Columbus Day, or whatever we're calling that holiday these days, and we'll be able to hopefully move, our goal will be to get someone in place early November, so there's at least the transition time there. So we know technology is one of those things where you kind of need some overlap, for someone to show you the keys. And I guess the other thing I would just say is that, you know, Mike did a great job for us this whole summer, and I think really getting us where we were and able to deploy that many Chromebooks and get up and running. Ever since this whole shutdown hit, he's been, you know, he's been a tremendous asset and really stepped up and did a great job for the kids, and he will be missed.
So I guess I would ask Mary to please extend our thanks to him for his tremendous service and contributions to the Clinton Public Schools.
So next thing, I just have a one pager in here. I just want to give you a quick financial update. This isn't a detailed report. We will give you a detailed first quarter report on next meeting, October 19. Just real quick, the FY '19 end-of-year report. So Glenn, Mr. Frauto, the new Business Manager, has been reviewing the FY, working on the FY '20 report, reviewed the FY '19 report, reviewed the FY '18 report. There were a couple discrepancies that we noticed. One of them was that we needed to recode basically $1.8 million from special education tuition to vocational tuition. That's essentially the tuition we paid to ASABET, and that was actually in the FY '19 end-of-year report, it was erroneously filed as special ed tuition, which does come into play because there are certain federal grants and things where you have to keep a maintenance of effort in special education spending. So we have filed an amendment to recode that. Additionally, there was $117,000 of sick leave buyback that was paid at the end of FY '19 that was not reflected on the FY '19 report. And that can be a little bit tricky because those are actually paid out of encumbered funds, so they are technically paid in the next fiscal year, but they were encumbered from the previous year. So I think that's part of the transition there. But I think we have corrected those. Mr. Frauto did a nice job going through and highlighting any areas he had discrepancies, and we were able to meet and go through all the discrepancies and account for them and get that amendment in. The FY '20 end-of-year report, we requested an extension until 10/31. They normally do October 1. Pretty much, you know, everyone pretty much gets in a, most school districts request an extension and get the additional extension for one more month. Right now, we're currently working with the town on reconciling accounts and going through the cost allocation agreement to make sure that, if you remember, we approved one last year that accounted for director of facilities and those types of things. So we're working with Diane on getting those figures so we can incorporate them in the FY '20 end-of-year report. And our FY '21 first quarter update will be provided next week, our next meeting, excuse me. I did just want to show a quick thing. This is just a salary spreadsheet that we were working on. So in our general fund, we had $16,059,000 allocated for salary. So far through quarter one, we've expended $1.3 million. And if you look at our encumbered salaries, so basically all our salaried employees, what they would be scheduled to make between now and the end of the year that we have not paid yet, it's about $14 million, which would leave us a balance of $665,000. As far as, but that's all salary. That's not salary for teachers. That's not just like regular salary. That's stipends, that's subs, that's everything. So if you look at that right-hand column, it says unencumbered amount. So there's some stipends, subs, sick leave buyback, salary assistance, and the total, so our total unencumbered, but potential liabilities there is 547. If we subtract that out, that leaves us about $117,000, and there are two teaching positions right now that are, we are attempting to fill. So we're right about on track with salary. So that's just the one thing I wanted to at least give you a ballpark on, is that we are, we're in pretty good shape in salary. I know at one point, there was some, you know, as we kind of added some additional sections and remote teachers, we were going over in some lines, but we know we were under in some other lines when there were some resignations that we didn't replace. So right now, it's pretty much all evened out. Like I said, we'll get you an exact account-by-account breakdown for the next meeting.
Any questions? Okay.
For the FY '20 circuit breaker, we did get that claim in. Our instruction tuition costs, our claim was $949,000. Basically, that's our amount. That's over the four times the foundation budget there that's eligible. Based on the reimbursement rate, you would see what we would get for a circuit breaker claim, but that has not, state has not yet finalized a budget, and because of that, they have not yet finalized the circuit breaker reimbursement rate. So we'll have to kind of stay tuned on that to figure out what reimbursement we would be looking at getting during the next fiscal year.
Does that change every fiscal year normally?
The budgeted percentage, yeah. The percent reimbursement typically kind of changes each fiscal year. Normally, what ends up happening is there's, the budget will, the government will, the state will appropriate so much money towards that line, and then they'll almost have to, then they'll look at the claims, and then that'll kind of determine it, but you don't know when they go into it, they say, hey, we want to fund it at 70%. This is what it should be. I think statutorily, it's supposed to be 80%, but I don't think they, or subject to appropriation. And then transportation was supposed to get phased in as part of the eligible transportation, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, but only 25% for this year. So if they manage to fund that, that would be an additional $13,000 we could claim, but they did say that they would anticipate that they would probably fund circuit breaker, regular circuit breaker first before getting to the transportation part, depending on the available funds. So this is a quick snapshot of where we are right now. We've already started kind of looking at our FY '22 budget and going from there. The next section I have here is transitioning into some of our reopening updates. So I just want to start with looking at the health data. There's a graph in there that kind of shows you our trend. The red line is eight, the yellow line's at four, and you can see the blue line shows our data from week to week. The most recent week of data, September 30, we were at 314 total cases, which was an average for cases last 14 days was 15, and it was a rate of 7.6 in terms of average daily incidents per 100,000 people. Now, I believe when I checked this afternoon, our Clinton data was still only at like 316 or 318, so it looks like we did have a good week. So we're hoping that that number will continue to, or hoping that number will continue to stay in the red, hopefully trending, or yellow, excuse me, trending downward. But we are watching that. We did have a Safety Committee meeting last week to kind of talk about that and reiterate the fact that the state has announced, has continued to say that it's three weeks in the red before you really change models. There's some other things you might look at. We might combine the red in terms of that average daily per 100,000. You also got to look at your positivity rate, your positive testing rate, that's a second data point. Also, go to talk to the Board of Health and figure out into those cases. I mean, not all red is created equal, and you figure that, you know, an eight or an 8.2 is going to be a lot better than a, you know, 12 or something like that. So we've got to make sure that we're not reaching a community spread situation, so we'd be in touch with the Board of Health if that were to happen. I think as of right now, we scheduled our next meeting for October 15, I believe, was the next Safety Committee meeting that we scheduled so that we had one on the books. I think we did three weeks from the last one because we figured that we wouldn't necessarily have to change unless there was an emergency situation for three weeks. So after that graph, which is a summary, I just put in the original pages from the state's report from September 30, in case you wanted to see the raw data there. In terms of the Board of Health communication and tracking, I think now that we're back every day, we've come a long way in terms of how we communicate that information. We do typically get the addresses from the Board of Health, and then we're able to kind of cross-reference those addresses to see if they're in our student information system database so that we can try to have a heads-up if we think that there may be any students involved in those cases. So I think we've done a nice job of trying to build, open up those lines of communication with the Board of Health in terms of making sure that we're all on the same page. The next agenda item I had there was a learning model beyond 10/22/20. So if you recall, when we took our original vote, what we talked about was opening in a hybrid model, and I think we put 10/22 as our, the time that we were committing to that model, and we said that we would review that at the 10, at the October 5 meeting. So, you know, basically, we need to figure out what we want to do beyond October 22, because we need to start giving parents sort of a heads-up. My recommendation right now is that we continue with the current hybrid model, at least through, plan on keeping that model through Thanksgiving. If you look in here, there is, the page after the data has our re-enrollment opening, our enrollment data, and you can see some of the changes. So what you can see here is about, so it ended up, after everything was all said and done, about 18% of our students ended up in a full remote situation. We thought it was going to be 20. When it first started, it was a little higher, it was almost up to 21 or 22. Now that the kind of dust has settled and some people, you know, were able to tour the schools and come in from meetings, we're down to 18% at full remote. We have 257 students, which represents 14% of our student body, who, what we call in-person, basically, they come both weeks, that would fall into that high-needs category. And then we have about 33% of our population in the green cohort, 35 in the gold cohort, and then the total cohort percentage is basically just the green plus the in-person. So you can see on any given day, if it's a green week, we have about 47% of the student body here, and if it's a gold week, we have about 49%. So our goal moving forward, what I would recommend, is we continue moving forward with the hybrid model through Thanksgiving, but our goal in this next phase is going to be to start looking at data to see if there are students that we may, more students that we may be able to offer in-person learning to, basically, to all, so that 240, 257 in in-person, if we can try to expand upon that number a little bit. It's a little bit difficult, there's certain grades and, you know, cohorts that are, that's easier to add a few more bodies than others, but I think we want to make those decisions looking at data. There are some, there are some guidelines that have been recently released from the state, particularly around special education students and the potential need for compensatory services based on the spring. And looking at data, we might be able to identify some of those students who may be eligible for compensatory services and bring them in for both weeks right away too, as their compensatory service, is to allow them the full in-person learning. So that's my recommendation, is that basically, we plan on continuing in the hybrid, and I think now that, you know, I kind of would think of this as sort of phase two of the hybrid, coming from, you know, October 25 through November 25, or whatever that, whatever that is exactly right before Thanksgiving, and that during that phase, we would be looking to try to expand and see if we can, we can bring in some more students if possible, and it would be based on data, so.
So would someone like to make a motion to continue the hybrid model insofar as the data allows us to continue to support it through Thanksgiving, your recommendation is?
I think right now, yeah, and then we can revisit in a couple weeks, early in November, and we'll talk about where we look for, where we go from there.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Goodsell with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
Can I just have one thing, and I don't know if you-
Can you speak up?
Yeah. I, um, when parents have a question on, whether it's, or suggestion, who should they contact? Would it be like the vice principal, the principal, you know, like, this is going forward, I like it. I mean, I'm saying, you know, I think a lot of it's, you know, they get a lot of their information shared from each other, but they have a specific question about the system they're using or feedback. You know, I know you wouldn't want, I wouldn't assume you'd want it all to you. Should it just go to the principal? If you don't have an answer now, I can-
Yeah, you're saying like if individual parents have questions or concerns-
Right, yeah. If it's an individual teacher, I get that, but if it's a kind of a system question, you know, like, I don't want to get specific right now.
Yeah, I'd say no, it's probably best to start, if it, I think it would depend on what you think the suggestion is. If it's more of a huge system-wide suggestion, and something that you wanted to reach out to me with an email or something, that's fine. If it's more of a building-specific type thing, I think reaching out to the principal or system principal is fine. And then as we continue to kind of, at our meetings, look at refining things, I mean, I think that's, you know, we're still all learning a lot of this stuff and still trying to, trying to piece it together and trying to make sure that our students are prepared for whatever, whatever learning model we need to go into.
And everything I received was positive, it was just, you know, kind of working the actual system.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
So I guess, and I think, you know, as I always just said, till Thanksgiving, I think, you know, I think we know that hybrid is not a perfect system, and it's not, it's not perfect for all families. I think right now, getting students in 50% of the time is probably the best we can do right now. So the more students we can maybe try to add to that, we can. I figure, you know, my personal view is that, you know, my principals are ready to like, you know, we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about some things, and I think we got it, we're trying to figure out how we balance everything because we're looking at all these different possibilities at this point, because I feel like we shouldn't really just live in a hybrid zone, right? So if we're in a hybrid and we're continuing to go in a hybrid and the data's saying we should stay in hybrid, we should be looking to say, well, how can we start bringing more kids back? How can we start bringing more kids back? And we should try to incorporate that as we go through. At the same time, we're also trying to prepare for what does, you know, are we prepared to switch to remote learning at a moment's notice if we need to? Do we have that communication prepared, those expectations outlined? And are we prepared to go to something like a Remote Plus where only the high-need students come to school if the data and the conditions required that? So we're really just in that process of now, we've focused so much on the hybrid for the opening, we're stepping back and kind of looking at some of those other components of the plan to really refine them now with what we know and say, okay, if we had to do it, could we? And just getting that stamp, so. But it's good, I feel good where we are.
I should say too, just for the sake of clarity, that the motion was to continue the hybrid model, but you all understand that we also have a fully remote model that's working simultaneously as well, that we're also continuing.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one, technology, I put FC 118 after that. That stands for Fun Code 118, that's a grant code. So we did receive about $100,000 in a technology grant earlier in the year. That was for Chromebooks, additional hotspots, and also some additional software. We did get those Chromebooks in. We have all the Chromebooks in that we need to be fully one-to-one from K to 12. We are in the process of still configuring and distributing some of the kindergarten Chromebooks, but every other grade level, 1 to 12, should have them. Hotspots, we do have the additional hotspots in, the same thing, we're in the process of, I think we got 55 new hotspots. We're in the process of setting those up so we can start deploying those. And some of the software, it was more smaller software for those programs, more specialized things to add on for certain populations and cover some gaps. The Clinton Middle School Viral Transmission Risk Assessment and Mitigation Strategies. So this was that report that was done where we talked about having the firm that was recommended by the, identified as the state as one of the firms that could do the study. They came in, they did, they did go through the building. I did not give you the full report in your packet, I know I emailed or sent you a link to the full report. The full report is pretty lengthy, and it does cover a lot of things. I mean, it covers things from, you know, what foliage you should have outside the building, those types of things, right? But the main purpose, I would say, for us was the ventilation systems. That was the primary driver for this, for this study. And I did give you the appendix or the section on ventilation systems that is in your packet. And I think the biggest takeaway from this is the class capacity. So I'm trying to find exactly, I'm trying to find the exact page for you where they outlined this recommendation, or this, it should be... Okay, so it's where they start doing the math. That's when it started making sense to me. So on page 17, under Analysis and Recommendations, it talks about the classroom ventilation system. So basically, the big question that came up was, we had a statement from our engineering firm, or our HVAC firm, that said that all of our systems were operational as built, right? So then the question was, well, they were built in 1974 or whatever, so what, what does that mean for today? So what they have done here was basically, they've said the outside design flow for that building is 345 cubic feet per minute. The original size of that building, 900 square feet, would be designed for 35 people, which would give you, or sorry, would give you 32 people, excuse me, based on the way that they do their calculations of per person, which means you would need 430 cubic feet per minute. So basically, we know we have 345 cubic feet per minute, so based on the requirements under code, what is the max capacity we could put in a classroom? Right now, it says, if actual occupancy density is assumed, 345 cubic feet per minute of outside air meets the minimum ventilation requirements for up to 23 people. So I think that's, that was like the, in my mind, that was the biggest takeaway, is to say that as long as I don't have more than 23 people in a classroom, what I should have is sufficient airflow. And right now, in the hybrid model, we do not have anywhere, and with the social distancing guidelines, we don't have anywhere near 23 people in a classroom. So I know right now, from a ventilation standpoint, we should be good. One of the things that I did note about that though, is that moving forward, that's something that could have some budgeting and planning implications as we move into next year, because I think even moving into, you know, whether it's a spring or whether it's next year, whenever we kind of start trying to get back to full in-person, that means that I need to keep in mind that, you know, COVID's not going to go away overnight, so we're going to need to keep in mind that we're really going to try to build our structure around sort of that 23, in that 23 people in that space, at least I think in the near future, which should be manageable, it just, sometimes in the middle school, you do have sections that are a little higher. Right now, in particular, in the seventh, eighth grade, they definitely have sections that are higher than 23 people because the way they condense their schedule to teach remote sections, but those 23 people, you know, they might have 28 kids in a class, but it's based on the fact that they only ever have 14 there. You know what I mean? Because right now, it's hybrid. So if we were going to bring everybody back, we would have to make some adjustments off of that, but then that would have to figure into, for bringing everybody back at that point, what's the status of the full-time remote learners, and how do we handle that? So I think that was, that was the biggest takeaway. Our goal is to, you know, Russ Karstadt will be, Mr. Karstadt will come, I think we're going to have him come to the next meeting, which will be on the 19th. Our goal is to discuss some of these findings once we have had a chance to really comb through the report at the Safety Committee meeting on the 15th in preparation of the school committee meeting on the 19th. I think the only other primary recommendation they had in there that seemed feasible, there were kind of two more around ventilation. One was around potentially adding some UV light, and the other one was potentially adding some sort of humidity, humidifiers, those types of things. Humidifiers can get messy because all of a sudden, you go from, you know, you have dry air this week- air this week and you're trying to cool it off, and then next week, you got mold problems, you know? So humidifiers can be a little tricky when it's not built into your system. But the UV light is probably something that we are looking at. There's a bunch of different UV light solutions right now in terms of, some can be mounted in classrooms, some can be almost like portable things that could go around at night using UV light to help purify air. So we will, we're kind of looking into some of those solutions. We'll probably present that at the Safety Committee meeting.
Thank you. Questions?
I just had a quick question. I know when we did the tour of the middle school, there were freestanding units, air purifiers in the classrooms. This doesn't include those, correct?
That, when they talked about that airflow?
Right.
No, it's talking about the, that cubic feet per minute is based on the actual existing ventilation-
On the actual system?
Yep.
Not the extra that we added?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any others? Thank you.
All right. So athletics. So Friday, Friday, I went down by the spillway there and watched a little bit of the cross-country meet that we had on, here in town on Friday. I think the boys, the boys beat air, and I think the girls, girls did not come out on the winning side, but that's okay. It was nice just to have a, it was nice to host an athletic competition. So Friday, we had some athletics. I know today, I believe, field hockey traveled away, at least one of our field hockey teams, I think they won 4-3 at St. Bernice. I think I saw that. So, but the question about athletics is just letting people know what would happen, what happens if we go in the red, those types of things. And the MIA has provided some guidance, the league is trying to provide some guidance. They're trying to follow the DESE's same model so that it would be, it's actually three weeks in the red before you have to panic. Originally, there was some guidance that said if you go in the red, you might have to suspend your competitions against other, against other schools. I think they've walked that back a little bit, but I think once again, it comes back to, you can't use one indicator for any given thing, right? Because we were 7-6 last week. If we went to 8-0 next week because of one additional case over a two-week period, like that doesn't, that's not a huge change. But if you also have, if you had, if you went to red because now we're at 11 and you had a positivity rate of four and a half or something like that, you know, now it's a much different story. So I do think that there will be a little bit of discretion with the Board of Health and trying to figure out what the cause of switching to red is. But we're going to continue to just follow, you know, I was talking to Mr. Smith today, Athletic Director, and we're just going to kind of follow the guidance from the league and the MIA. I mean, they're staying on top of it. I know there's some things like fans, you know, they built their whole plan saying you could have 50 fans, I think, and then the last week, the governor said you can have 100 people at an outdoor event. They're still doing, I think they're doing 50 fans this week and they're doing, I think it's 50, or it might be, maybe they went to 100, but they're still doing home fans only, I think, at this point, which was the plan originally to avoid more out-of-town travel. So, but, you know, the, Mr. Smith was calling me from the, from basically the AD meeting to kind of update me on certain things. So I think that will, you know, he's on top of it, and I think, you know, our general, my general guidance to him is, you know, I think we just want to follow what the league recommendation is and just keep us informed so we know how to help support them.
Any questions on athletics? Nope. Thank you.
So the last part is, there's a new school committee calendar in here and talked about the tri-council date and format. So normally, we would have, we originally tentatively scheduled to have a tri-council meeting for today. Typically, the fall tri-council meeting, we review MCAS data, which we don't really have any. And also, just the logistics of trying to run a tri-council, I don't, I think that's probably a little too many people to try to have a working meeting and sharing a meal and those types of things we associate with a traditional tri-council. So I'm recommending that we actually just cancel the fall, the fall tri-council meeting. And then there's a new school committee calendar in your packet. If you notice, there's some changes immediately in November. So originally, our meetings in November were, I think, on the 9th and the 23rd, and we tried moving those up to the 2nd and the 16th. So I don't know if that impacts anybody, but what I tried to do is essentially kind of what we did over the summer. I'm trying to keep us on that two, every two-week cycle, just because the, I think the rate that things could potentially change, especially as we enter the winter, I don't want us to have that three-week gap and having to call an emergency meeting or anything like that. So it just sort of staggered that, those meetings between now and Christmas, I think it bumped them up like a week. So instead of having a three-week gap between the 19th and November 9th, because I think there's an extra week and, an extra Monday in October this year or something like that, it would end up having, giving us the 2nd, 16th, and 30th, and then December 14th. So that's, that was a change. And then I just tentatively put in March 8th as a tri-council. Typically, our second meeting would be in January, but I, you know, I think meeting during the winter with that many people would still probably be kind of optimistic. I figured by March, hopefully, we would be able to have a solution where we could meet and really go over like our version A of the budget and try to make sure that we're keeping people informed of what we want to do for FY '22. So-
Makes sense.
This is a, so I think we would need to approve these changes.
Yeah. Can we have a motion to accept the revised school committee calendar, revised October 5th?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Any discussion? Questions? There being none? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. The next bullet is just kind of an update on social justice and equity. The first thing is, it's the Harvard Graduate School for Education, Leading for Equity and Excellence. So that's the course I'm taking this fall. We're now into like week four of that course, and I've found it, it's a very, very informative course, very, very self-reflective, and it really helps you realize some of the advantages that maybe you had, you know, growing up that you didn't, you never really appreciated were advantages, or some of the advantages you've had throughout, throughout your life. I included just some of the, you know, some terms in here, and this isn't, you know, this is just a handout from the course that had some of these terms. The point is not to kind of quiz people on the terms or go through it, but what I found powerful is identifying these terms better. I think that by trying to go through and clarify terms, and it's not necessarily on here, but even just the, the general term, there was a general definition of what racism is, and just that general definition, the working definition that they were using for this class, it's taken from research, what I appreciated about it was, it took sort of the, not derogatory, but like the prejudicial component of racism out and just kind of acknowledged that we're a society that race has mattered, right? Like, race has mattered in terms of whether you could vote. Race has mattered in terms of whether you could own land. Throughout our history, race has mattered. So therefore, there's some level of racism in terms of the privileges that go along with your race. It doesn't necessarily mean that people now are actively being prejudicial against other races. It's, it's how can we try to say, you know, even if we're trying to say now everyone sort of has more of an equal opportunity, we've got to understand that not everyone's starting from an equal spot, right? And how do we help support that? So, and I think that learning some of those definitions, to me, it helps us have, I think it helped our class have better, open-minded discussions about things because it took away that initial, you know, I think a lot of people, especially, you know, especially white people, I mean, you hear the term racist, and I think a lot of times it becomes, you become defensive, right? And you're trying to say, I'm not racist, or, you know, it's, and it's not, it's not saying that you're, that that's something that you're trying to actively do. It may very well be the other way. But it's understanding that some of the history of our society, of our country has been built off some of those things. So it's been a great course. I know that the, there's a, there's a section in between, in a couple of weeks, I have to get some background where you kind of do a project with it, so I'm sure that that'll involve kind of looking at some policies or structural things within the school. It's supposed to be kind of an application, so I'll keep us, I'll keep you informed of that and see what we can do. The next, the next sheet, the one that's white font on black print, is the Equity Imperative. This is a series put on by, it's sponsored by the DESE. It's three sessions. It was October 1st, the 8th, and the 15th. So I'm participating in this, this professional development as well as Principal Cermak and Principal Harder. So the three of us are participating in the Equity Imperative, the anti-racism term, the same thing, it's anti-racism terms and perspectives. So it's really trying to make sure that we're, we're making, getting a true understanding of what we're all talking about. And I think the key to having open, productive dialogue about how to improve equity is to make sure that we have a better understanding of what we're actually saying when we're using certain terms, and I think that's sort of what these classes are helping us to And then after that, there's a couple, there's two pages that just talks about TNTP. They're going to be facilitating, that's the group, they helped, they did our anti-bias training last year, and they'll be facilitating the Diversity Network for this year. And these are some of their goals on cultural proficiency, talent, strategy, and those types of things. You can see a little bit about what the Diversity Network looks like. We will be participating in that again this year. That is, and I put another note on the agenda, that's Fund Code 216. So that is the, that's also a grant opportunity through the diversification, Teacher Diversification Pilot Program that we should be entering year two on. They have not given the final awards yet, but we have already been invited and registered to the Diversity Network stuff for November 19th.
Any questions on equity? Thank you.
The Elementary School Turnaround Plan, that's another one, Fund Code 222. So that was the turnaround grant application. So we got, we did, we were awarded that grant last year as a planning grant. This year, we're eligible for $15,000 for an implementation grant, so we have applied for that. There is a quick, it's the, you know, they kind of changed, the turnaround plans used to be very, very lengthy documents. Now they're called Sustainable Improvement Plans, and, you know, they give you a little more flexibility on how you present them. So in your packet, you do have the six-page or seven-page, I believe, seven-page document that we submitted. We had to submit this document. If you remember, last year, the Clinton Public, Clinton Elementary School was identified for having a low-performing subgroup, and as we mentioned, that subgroup was our, that subgroup was our white students. And we did a lot of research, led, you know, working with the state, looking at the root causes, looking at, you know, different initiatives we might need to implement. And then this, this plan pretty much represents the steps that we're taking and some of the goals we have moving forward. And we tried to dovetail it a lot. I mean, it's a difficult year because it's one of those things where, you know, for all we know, if there was MCAS last year, we could have been off of this list already, but there wasn't MCAS last year. So we're going to look at it as an opportunity with the fact that we're now eligible for another year of grant funding. We'll take that grant funding to try to continue to implement this plan, and hopefully, we'll see some significant results this spring if we're able to get the MCAS testing this spring. The, I think the last update I have is just the human resource update. We did do a couple more finalist interviews. We spent last week mostly checking references on some finalists, so Mike and I will be collaborating shortly just to kind of compare our final notes and hopefully be making an offer this week. That's our goal. You know, checking references always seems like one of those things that you're just going to sit down and do in an hour, and then when no one answers their phone, you've got to sit and play phone tag for three days. So we're trying to just get that done, and then hopefully we can, hopefully we can move forward as soon as we can.
Great.
I believe that's all I have.
I believe that it is. So I know that curriculum and policies and procedures did not meet. What say you to the others? Safety Committee, did you guys? No, we have-
Safety did meet, yeah. We, I talked about it a little bit already, though.
Right.
Yeah, but-
The 15th or 14th?
October 15th, I think is our next one.
It's the next one, yeah.
It's a Thursday, should be a Thursday.
Marketing?
We have not met.
Okay.
It's that September newsletter there. We do have the October newsletter getting ready to come out. We, the principals have been getting me some articles from their reopening that we'll be compiling tomorrow. We got an update from Athletic Director, those types of things. We'll be putting that together and hopefully getting that out. Our target is to try to get it out by the end of this week for the holiday weekend.
Okay. And facilities? No?
No.
Okay. And I understand that we have an update on the MOAs. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll just walk you through it real quick. I think we're really, really close on the MOAs. I just have not been able to get a final confirmation from, from the, from the union. So just so you know the process, we did have kind of that executive session at the last meeting to discuss strategy. I was able to get a proposal off to the, to the unions. I think, I think it was like Thursday after the last meeting, maybe Wednesday. I think they reviewed it on Friday, at least one of the unions reviewed it on Friday, came back with a list of concerns and changes. I think I ran a couple of them by the Negotiations Subcommittee, but we were able to make some tweaks, get it back out to them in a draft form, and we have yet to hear from them formally on the final draft form that we have right now. I think they're very, very close. I think that they might even be done. I just have not heard from them yet. So I think at this point, I think it would be premature for us to vote. I think that we could just keep this on, on the agenda for, till the next meeting, and that, that's fine. I know super intense contracts on there as well, but we could, you could keep, we could just make all the contracts to the next meeting if we would like to defer that.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay. Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
I just got one thing, Joel.
Yes, sir.
Is the principal of the elementary school on there?
Yeah.
All right. I just, I went down the middle, elementary school this morning, or this afternoon to do a pickup. I just want to say firsthand, I saw the system they have down there is amazing. And if anyone was down there today around 3:20 and they were held up, that was me. I was, I was not aware, they had a great system, and I was the one that was confused and getting out of my car. So I want to apologize to the staff down there. They had a great plan, and the people behind me, they were like getting impatient. I apologize.
Let the record show, Mr. Bailey apologizing for gumming up the worst.
I know there were people trying to get home, and I was the guy holding up.
All right.
Get out of your car.
But indicative of a system that still functioned even with you-
Despite my-
Even with you involved in it.
Yeah. Don't get out of your car.
Anything else? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.